Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, May twentieth. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Elder Wendell Brantley, Associate Pastor of More Than Conqueror's Faith Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Clinton Woods. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning. Bow heads for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you right now. We are amazed that you allowed us to be here today. We thank you that your mercies are new every morning. And great is your mercy toward us. We pray for this great city. We pray for our mayor, this head of the council, this administration in its entirety, God. And we pray, Lord, that you would bless them, that you would give us single-mindedness and that we will come together on one accord. We ask for your guidance, your blessings, and we ask for your direction. And we pray that there will be unity and strength in this city. We bind anything that would hinder the growth and the development of this city, and we thank you for great economic development to come. And Lord, we thank you that as they administer these meetings today, that you will just get in the midst of it. Join us together, bind us together in love, fix our minds and our hearts towards you. And for all of this, we'll be so careful to give you the praise, give you the honor, and we'll give you the glory. And it's in the matchless name of Jesus we pray. And let it be happy and glad heart say, amen. And amen.
Could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Potem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. And Council President O'Quinn.
Present. Thank you. Council, the minutes are not ready for the February fourth, twenty twenty-five through May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meetings. At this time, we'll have a presentation from the mayor on the proposed general fund budget.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. It's good to see all of you all this morning. Also, good morning to the general public. I want to... Actually, I want to start with some thank yous. This, the budget that we're presenting today is, is a process to get to this point. Our proposed budget is presented to the entire council and to the general public. With that said, it's not a one-man band, if anything. It's a, it's a team led by the Finance Department who works very hard, from input from department heads and city employees, from input from community and residents, input and feedback from counselors individually and collectively. Process of not just going into numbers, but how we make impact in our community and on behalf of our employees. With that said, I want to start by thanking Diana Bolden, who leads the Department of Finance for the city of Birmingham. Along with her team, Alicia Coleman, Derek Gray, Cornita Eskrich, Dorothy Mall, and Lindia, because I got to get her first name right, Ms. Denson. They're here, seated here, and they put in some impressive work and time to get us to this point. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge them. And everyone else, Chaz Mitchell and all of the other chiefs and everyone else who's had a hand in this budget. I think you all just received the twenty twenty-six proposed budget. There are a couple of things I wanted to share as it relates to this operating budget. First of all, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget builds on our continued momentum in resurfacing our streets, which continues to be a top priority, not just for the council, but for the general public, as well as advancing a public safety strategy that you all have continued to support, which includes recruiting more police, as well as investing in our youth. This proposed twenty twenty-six budget is five hundred and ninety-one million dollars. Again, this proposed twenty twenty-six budget is five hundred and ninety-one million dollars. We want to note in detail some of our shared priorities, which include neighborhood revitalization, public safety, investments in our youth, and services for the unhoused, as well as our city employees. Starting with neighborhood revitalization, this proposed budget combined is, for neighborhood revitalization, is twenty-one, twenty-one point eight million dollars, which is a three-quarters of a million increase from last year. That includes fifteen million for street paving, weed abatement, three million dollars, which is up a quarter million, demolition, two million, which is up a half a million, sidewalks again at one million, traffic calming again at a half a million, recycling at three hundred thousand. Please note, as it relates to since FY nineteen, we have budgeted more than a hundred million dollars in street resurfacing. FY nineteen had fifteen point nine million. FY twenty was ten million. FY twenty-one was ten million. Twenty-two was eight point four million. And then FY twenty-two again was ten million from the surplus that was approved March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. FY twenty-three had fifteen million. FY twenty-four was fourteen point five million. Current budget we're in now that ends June thirtieth, that you received the paving list for twenty twenty-five is also fifteen million. And this proposed budget again to you is fifteen million. Wanted to shift to public safety and violence reduction. This budget invests six million in rolling stock with a commitment of additional million dollars for police vehicles. This is on top of the money. This is in addition to the money you approved for the retention recruitment plan. Now, in partnership with the council, you all know that we launched, again, the fifteen point eight billion dollars for recruitment and retention in October, and it's shown positive results. But this budget, proposed budget, also includes coming ground conflict resolution in partnership with Birmingham City Schools at one million dollars. The Park and Recreation Safe Haven Initiative of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is up a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We talked about this for quite some time. This was even part of the recommendation from the Crime Commission Report to centralize and reboot our youth sports. That's at a half a million dollars. There will be more to come with a public presentation to the council and to the general public related to the detail of this youth sport, sports league. The Restore Youth Reentry Initiative, which is something each of you champion, is doubled. Last year, they were in the budget for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And this year, they will be in the budget for four hundred and fifty thousand. And then on top of that, additional community violence intervention is one point five million. Please recall that with the combination of the NRCJR Gun Violence Reduction Strategy, the R S A, which is known as One Hood Citywide Initiative, of course, O A A Hospital Link Violence and T C's, the Streets Teams, and the Live Free Training. All of these programs are currently underway with significant resources already on the ground to the tune of, I think, four million. So this one point five million, in addition to the double the cost for the Restore program, adds over five million dollars towards violence reduction, which is separate and apart from the police department's budget. But again, this one point five will mainly go towards the second half of the year as we continue to draw down on the significant amount of existing funding that we have not totally spent yet on all the initiatives that are currently underway that you all support and led, led by the, led by us. Want to move on to youth investments. You all know, as a city, we're committed to supporting our youth in education. I think it gets lost a lot, that eighty-seven million dollars pretty much goes directly to the school system. That doesn't require council approval from adverbalium taxes. So I think it's important to note, especially when intentional misinformation is put out there that we don't fund education. It's because it's not necessarily part of our process, because it's baked in into our adverbalium. The city school system's budget is made up of local tax dollars, state funding, federal funding. And of their budget, they receive eighty-seven million from the city of Birmingham. Now, on top of that eighty-seven million, this proposed budget includes an additional five million to support Cradle to Career. That includes two million dollars for the Birmingham Promise, one million for Mental Health, an additional one million for financial literacy, quarter of a million dollars for Small Magic, which is formerly known as Birmingham Talks. It's an early childhood initiative. And then Kids and Jobs at two hundred and ten thousand. There's been a lot of issues centered around homeless that we've attempted to address in the current fiscal year. We're upping the ante in the next fiscal year in this proposed budget. Of course, you all know, in last year, the city invested in the Heart Program with Urban Alchemy at one point eight million to provide support and resources to individuals experiencing homelessness. And then you also know, we selected and you all approved the Home for All Initiative, which is two point eight million. And so in this new budget, we will invest another one point five million in services for the unhoused. The Community Development Department, this is on top of the community development that oversees eight hundred thousand dollars for the community development block grant dollars that details various programs that deal, engage, and from a programmatic housing rehabilitation and so many more things that I don't have time to name related to our unhoused residents. Want to move on to public transportation. The Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, known as B J C T A, will receive a proposed eleven million dollars. The, the express bus rapid transit will be proposed three million dollars. And Birmingham On Demand powered by VIA, two point five billion dollars. And last, but certainly, certainly not least, because we cannot do anything without our employees, I want to talk about the package we have for our employees. This budget reflects continuing investment in our city employees. I want to start with the city as it relates to healthcare benefits. As of the employer, we will absorb any additional costs for our employees. So our employees will not have any additional costs towards their healthcare costs this year. The employers, what we are absorbing is three point six million dollars. In addition to that, there will be a five percent merit paid for all eligible employees as to the tune of three point nine million. Longevity pay for eligible employees as to the tune of one million dollars. And then this year, cost of living adjustment, also known as COLA, at one percent, which is four point two million dollars. I want to, I want you to recall since FY eighteen, all employees have received, I'm sorry, all general service employees have received a seventeen percent pay increase from cost of living adjustments since FY eighteen. That doesn't include merit or longevity. Public safety employees have received twenty-two percent pay increase from cost of living adjustment. Again, this doesn't include merit or longevity pay. There's another note related to our pending actuary report from our actuary related to our pension. As the employer, the city will contribute forty million dollars for our pension. This does not include the recommendation from the Pension Board of the four hundred dollars a month for every retiree. Please note the following. In my left hand, we have, when you include, I want to get it right. Bear with me one second. Here it is. When you include all classified, permanent, unclassified, when you include all classified and unclassified, unclassified employees, we have four thousand plus current employees that will, and those who are eligible will receive the benefits I named. This budget, as you know, has a slight increase from last year. So we were not able to honor the recommendation out of, out of the general fund budget to support this eighteen million dollars on top of the forty million dollars related to the pension fund. I am wrapping up, but as I close out, I think some people are still walking to COVID year. We had to make tough decisions. Those decisions hadn't had to be made in the last four or five budget cycles. Why do I say that? I received a note from an employee at a restaurant that I, probably about three weeks ago, they handed me my bag and it was a note stapled to their bag and it says, please don't cut the library funding. So I just wanted to make a public note and request in this budget. Libraries, the libraries are receiving one percent of requests. I also want to make a note that the, there's significant increase in park and recreation to the tune of almost three million dollars because we really want to support our youth sports. We want to support the reimagining of some of our parks. So that includes half of the money related to a very important study that needs to be undertaken. But we've been guaranteed, as a municipality, that the private sector has interest in funding this plan as well, if the city showed initiative first. And there's some other things related to increase in maintenance of our, what do you call it? Our pools as well. So we just wanted to share publicly that there's a super focus and increase in resources for park and recreation to support our youth, youth sports and youth activity related to our citizens and families. And then, of course, you've noticed what I've said about the libraries, major focus on our youth, major focus on public safety, and a super, super, super focus on our city's infrastructure related, related to street paving and other things related to our city's infrastructure. One more note before I close out. You all are due another booklet. We had issues printing that booklet, which is why you don't have it today. But you will receive a second booklet related to the capital budget. So please forgive me for it not being prepared this morning. We had a snafu. It will be rectified. You will receive your capital book as well hopefully very, very soon. But don't let me make up a time and tell you to be ready the next hour. Mr. President and Council, thank you for your time and attention. Take any questions that may come to mind off the top of your head, just based on what you've heard. I know you have to get into this and digest it. Know it's a lot of information. Just a hundred and ninety-eight pages, but...
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Abbott.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask Mr. Mayor. I know in the past, we've talked about getting a, a list of which parts of each department's request were granted and which ones weren't. Because, you know, sitting through those meetings, the departments have a lot of things that they want. And, and most of them we're in favor of. So we just want to know which things were approved and which ones weren't.
So we're gonna...
Can that be produced?
Yeah, so we're going through a process. I can provide that. But if you will allow the administration first, we're gonna, in real time, be going back to the department heads to go through requests, what was honored, what was denied. As soon as we get through that process, which will be, I would say, the next, probably two weeks or less than, definitely share with you and the council what we went through. This is new for us as it relates to, on a continuum, how do we continue to engage departments and department heads related to requests on a yearly basis and then break it down quarterly based, based on what we've done in the past, only talk about the budget in one season and then present it to the council and the general public. And so we also got that request from our, our team to go in the detail of why certain things, why not certain things. A lot of the things that are not granted is not based on us not wanting to do. It's based on the simple fact that each budget is only within three hundred and sixty-five days, fifty-two weeks. And so you may have some needs here that we want to honor within this fiscal year. But your wants may not also be honored in that same fiscal year. But yes, for the most part, I'll be able to address your question via email, most likely, on the things requested, the things approved and the things not approved.
Thank you. And I don't mind waiting two weeks because I've waited twenty-three years and we've never received the information from any mayor that we've had. So you will be number one.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for presenting the budget. I'm excited to go in here and dissect and highlight and underline and all the good things as if I'm back in school. But I do have a question, a couple of questions. I know a big priority for a majority of us was code enforcement. So how is that reflected in the budget?
Yeah, so it's, it's reflected. There's a shift. I've, I shared this with Ms. Abbott this morning. There's a interest in this council because I know I talked to you all individually and from the majority of you, code enforcement, code enforcement, code enforcement. There will be a shift on the policing side related to beefing up how to engage, to augment what the, what the current four people who are APOC certified embedded in the legal department in partnership with P E P. So a triangle, if you will, of legal, P E P, and the police taking on a significant role from an enforcement standpoint, which is the main thing I hear from the council when they talk about more code enforcement. The consistency I'm hearing from the majority of you all is more enforcement. And so I went back and spoke to those three departments. The two of them are doing their part at a level that is high and at a level that you all supported based on the last committee of the whole where I heard you all publicly give praise to what the leveling up of those two departments did, especially with the increase of funding you all provided two budgets ago, I think to the tune of like additional four hundred and fifty thousand or half a million dollars. It's now time for B P D. Chief Pickett could not be with us today, but he wants to personally share, present to the council what that looks like in conjunction with these two departments as it relates to more enforcement, which is a priority for this council.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to request to get it before we vote for the budget.
Done.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then just a couple more questions. I guess I, I would feel more comfortable. I know Council Williams and I have talked to you about the youth sports reboot. I feel more comfortable if the council could have just like a little bit of a presentation explanation because I don't want to blindly vote for something without having some idea of the direction we're going in.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you said there was an additional one point five million dollars for the unhoused.
Yes.
For unhoused residents?
Yes.
What does that include? What else does that include?
Let me go to my notes. It is broken down by a couple of things. The first thing is a portion of that money will be for the expansion of what we call emergency beds. So Jimmy Hell Mission is taking on a program where they will be adding additional, additional beds. I think you all have seen what we've done for other organizations who, who participate and play in the emergency bed space. That's been something the city of Birmingham's always supported. Jimmy Hell Mission has been a great partner the last few years when it's come to extreme weather days of heat and or cold. They've taken on some additional help. What they want to do on their campus is expand emergency beds. So the city of Birmingham will be, wants to be in a position in this proposed budget to support that. Forgive me for not having the detail of what that number is, but it does exist. And then two, I think being in a position at some point, the Urban Alchemy money will, will wind down. But we don't want it to wind down in the middle of a fiscal year. So we want to be in a position to support their continued on the ground. What we found from the feedback we get from unhoused residents, from small business owners, from B P D, and pretty much from people, various walks of life. The One Heart has worked. Has tangible proof of being in a position to engage most vulnerable, but it not be policing from a arrests or enforcement standpoint because all those, majority of those issues are not criminal in nature. And so we want to get to, be in the best position to continue to fund that work.
And then my last, I guess, point is about the park study, which I'm very excited to hear about. I know it's something Council Clark has been screaming about. And I think a few of us as well. What is, I guess, can you expand about more or maybe later at committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think the Park Board, these two are probably in a better position to explain than I am. I'm, I'm simply listening to them, listening to Shanay Bennett, listening to other members of the Park Board. What we hear is to say, hey, Mary, we have a hundred and, a hundred-plus green spaces in our city. It's time for us to kind of assess, reassess how we engage those public spaces, what needs to be done, what can we reimagine? How do we engage the spaces? Any more efficient, better way from maintenance and infrastructure to wishes on what can be here, et cetera? So tell me what I'm missing. I feel like I'm missing something.
I think you, you know, did a really good job. I think, you know, we want to make sure that we're being good stewards of our resources. And so if there's a way for us to be able to make more investments in certain areas to really get the best use out of those spaces, then we think that that's, that's a, that's a good way forward. And so we know that we have too many parks, too many, you know...
There's no such thing.
No such thing. But we have a lot. We have a lot that, you know, needs to be managed. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we put the resources where they need to be.
Yeah, I agree with everything said except for the too many parks. I do feel like, you know, it's a, because we were built for, you know, segregation, white parks, black parks. We, we have parks that, you know, everybody can live near a park almost or within a ten-minute walk of a park. And we know for our sanity, we need access to green space and we need, you know, the oxygen and all the other stuff that natural areas provide. But we do have to manage it. And some of it might have to be passive and rewilded and other things that people aren't as accustomed to because, you know, all this mowing. But I, I feel like we not only have to look at the parks managed by the Park Board, but also the parks that aren't managed by the Park Board because we have lots of different management structures, you know, and maybe they all need to be managed. I mean, I don't know. But I think consultants can come in and take a look at our overall system of managing green spaces and who manages what and, and help us sort through and, you know, get a strategy with it.
Strategy is the key word, Ms. Councilman Smith. I think there, there are going to be recommendations on how we, we better manage our public spaces for our families and residents.
So what's the timeline for getting this started? Or, or like what's the plan?
So what's in this budget is seed money or matching money, matching funding? I think you'll see the Park Board take on their own process or at least this funding helps it get started. It is a significant time process, it's not short, how many months? Min- more than twelve?
It's more than twelve.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, we have a lot of parks, so this is, this is an extreme deep dive, very extensive. Very, very robust process. So our funding at minimum at least starts it, and then. Matching funding comes allows it to keep going to complete the study. And I may have that wrong, it may require the matching funding first for it to get done, but I don't have that detail.
Okay, because this is the first time I, I don't know, I've heard of it, I've known it's always been an idea, but I didn't know the park board was moving towards that, um, and then. You had mentioned the increased maintenance of pools as well. What would that look like? Pools, swimming pools?
It is so.
And I ask you that because. I have gotten several letters from youth in West End. About what were parked, and so I know that, you know, it'll cost a lot of money, but. And I know I'm not the only pool that is of concern in the city, but did you say that or did that just miss?
Yeah, so a couple of things going, there's, of course, you know, from the ARPA surplus money, there's some work being done. For our pools now, that's capital. This is more so general maintenance. That we've. Overdoubled as it relates to building swimming pool maintenance out of the operating budget.
Okay.
That's it, so. I think we got to get to a point where we can do a couple of things with our pools, one. There are certain pools that may never be able to come back online just based on.
The damage.
I don't know another way to say it, but you took the words out of my mouth. But the ones that can be repaired, I think we need to do everything we can to repair them, and then I think in this third bucket. We need to be in a position to maintain them so they don't get back to a place. And then this fourth bucket, which is extremely important, which is in this operating budget. We got to continue to be aggressive as we can in hiring, hiring um, lifeguards. I literally spoke to a resident this past Saturday, like in their front yard, and we were, had a very extensive conversation. About pools in the city and the conversation was centered around. You know. And you've said this before, you said it last year. There were two or three lifeguards at these pools. We're struggling to get one per pool. Because there's a new generation of people who don't want to be lifeguards, well, here's a deal. For our older generations, you can be a lifeguard too. But the speed of our pools opening this season is based on our ability to hire lifeguards. Not that we don't want pools open. We want people and we need people to be safe, that's going to require us to have lifeguards.
Okay, yeah, I think there's been a better job of getting lifeguards this summer, it's been a lot better, and I do. Appreciate that because something happened Memorial Park Pool, I think at the end of last summer, and it was resolved, so um, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Council Woods.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Had a few things jump out at me, the, the one thing I was going to ask about today. Was the unhoused, which uh, my wise colleague did bring up. So you don't have to repeat anything on that, but uh, just kind of add, like I said, we've seen a increase in kind of unhoused population. Uh, in the northeast part of the city. Some of that comes with some destructive behaviors, and so was excited to, to kind of see some more investment there. But like I said, got more, but I think, let me get deeper into it.
We found an encampment, we, well, the to- team member Latoya Walker found an encampment. In District One last week. We're talking. Like, a minimum of a dozen people in this, in this camp. But you wouldn't know it was there. But what we've also found, we believe this camp is responsible for uptick in property crimes in District One. So there's been a coordinated effort since last week with Urban Alchemy. With B P D. Uh, with Public Works to clean it up. As well as what we can do um, for those on top of what Urban, Urban Alchemy is doing. Um, so one, they don't go back to this space and or two, go somewhere else and create another camp. Uh, but then that can spill out into increase. As you said, quote, behavior related to an uptick in property crimes.
Thank you, Council Williams.
Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the couple of questions, one is surrounding the Birmingham Fund, and I don't think we need. In the past, we've had presentations in committee of the whole, I just would like to have an email up, I know that the market's kind of. Been in a, in a wild place, but just an email update about where we are with that.
So before you go to your second point, please forgive me for interrupting, but I think I want to answer this, so I don't forget that portion.
You know, that's how we talk, we interrupt each other.
I know, chill out, don't do that, we're in a public. One, um, we owe you a, I, I think we're going to be in a good position to give you updates on all the, um, the general fund. The rainy day account. But then, you know, we still got to, I think we're very close. If not done, I'm waiting on them to tell me, um, closing out the last fiscal year as it relates to an audit, so. Mr. Chairman, based on what your colleague said, we want to be in a position. Committee of the whole, or any type of meeting you want, budget and finance, it doesn't matter, or joint, to give you all of that. And because we, we owe you some financial updates, I know y'all have been very patient. I think we know the curve ball we were handed last year with the interruption definitely affected the finance department. But I, under his boldness leadership, they're definitely bending the curve, and I think there's. Way more additional information to share on all things finances.
Okay, so I think that that was my second point that you just answered, that, you know, around the midterm budget. Because there's really no way for me to honestly be able to look at this and not know what we, what, what happened last year. You know, I mean, I, I can get the, I can read the.
Yeah, I mean.
amended, and I can re- read the actual from twenty-four, but it's, it's not to know where we were. Overall, it's kind of hard to even.
Yeah, you all, if you turn to. You turn to page, I'm going to give you a full breakdown. Turn to page twen- starting page twenty-five. You get a very detail, very, very detail of kind of our revenue codes. Please recall the amended budget F Y twenty-five, if I'm correct, is December, right? December twenty twenty-four, so. When you look at what happened December twenty twenty-four on page twenty-five. In the middle column compared to your far right column twenty-six. And then it gives you a breakdown pretty much each year between pages twenty-six. And thirty, we can definitely have more discussion, one-on-one and as a group. And let finance talk more than I talk.
Yeah, that, I think that that would be helpful for me, at least to have an understanding of what.
Yes, sir.
How we trended. I am excited to hear about the uh, Jimmy Hale, I did notice. There, there are certain things that I want to address with you that might be better addressed in person. You know, like, and they're consistent things that I've been talking about, they're consistent things I've been talking about, like if we're going to dive into code enforcement, like, you know, I still want to know why. We're not entering in warrants and N C S, you know, I have had, you know, things that I don't, not going to take up everyone's time, but they're. Operational things that I think that we need to look at.
Yeah, Mr. President, look, he- what I'm hearing again on the. On the code enforcement piece. Not just passion on this day, it's a priority. I think there are a lot of things that can be done that doesn't necessarily require a dollar amount, I want to just publicly say that, it requires a. Shift in how the team is moving on the ground. It's clear, and it's very, very clear. That Katrina Thomas and her team picked up the mantle that you all gave and ran with it. I think it's clear on some of the adjustments the legal department has made. And from my conversations, um, with the, with the court system, the judicial branch of government. I think they literally hear what the legislative branch is putting down. There's one more piece of this that I think is very critical, that I think would be the game changer you all want to see. And I think under the leadership of Michael Pickett, he can provide what you want. And so bless you, just consider this, I think. The, the best example I can give is exhibition driving. It reached a fever pitch, not just from you, but from the public. Enforcement clearly is at that point. He was given a special assignment, they created Knight Rider, and I think you all saw the results. He's not here, so I cannot, I don't want to speak for him, and he has said, hey. Allow me to present this to the council with my team. And I think you all will be really, really encouraged about. What, how B P D is going to augment again what these other departments are doing. These three departments before something is given to. The other branch of government to move code enforcement the way you want it moved.
Okay, and the other thing is I did notice a pretty big decrease in P E P's budget. Is that due to, um, the?
What page you see? Oh, I see it, planning engineering.
What was there, is that due to ARPA money being spent through P E P and then those contracts for oversight for the ARPA? Projects, is that where that decrease is?
So if you all turn to page eighty-five, right quick, in your book, you see the detail. Of P E P's department. From pages eighty-five to eighty-eight. Actually eighty-five, yeah. So the biggest decrease is from the grant expenditure grant match. You see the one point six million on page eighty-six? At the bottom. That's where that comes from.
So is that ARPA though, is that what that?
The grant match, um, don't let me make up anything what the actual match was for. It was a grant match, so I don't think that was ARPA, it was just an actual grant match. You see the finance department's budget went up as well. Let me turn to page. Turn to page thirty-one. You see line zero one nine under finance. This increase is due to grant match. So the P E P saw a decrease because that grant match fell off. But citywide grant matches are increasing, and that's right through finance. What else? I got, we got, I'm here as long as you want me to be.
Okay, Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Whitson. Obviously, our conversations with you regarding code enforcement, they've had some impact, and you understand. The nine of us and what we're seeking as far as code enforcement. I do want to piggyback though on the comments of with Counselor Williams and even your statements. And the request that Mrs. Abbott had at the beginning. I am curi- I want to, I appreciate what's being done upstream with code enforcement. And apparently that's with P E P. But they also intersect with O C A and the municipal court. And you and I met with our presiding judge a few months ago, and I know as a council, we've been seeking more. Reporting, more consistent reporting, which gives us all of these interact as far as. Code enforcement, so I would like to see sort of, not necessarily what the wish list was, but. What they asked for in those departments that may be related to code enforcement, so we can be sure, we're just not putting all this on the top end. But we're going to see more results with reporting, I think municipal court, you had to, you and O C A had to provide them some. Staff that were able to provide us with our last report, and so we just want to be sure we're consistent with that. And that we have all the pieces in place to really give us what we want, it's not necessarily just boots on the ground. But it's also additional reporting and how we can monitor that or how we get that feedback, I think would help us a lot, so. Really what I'm requesting is what those, from those three departments when it comes to code enforcement. P E P, O C A, and municipal court, and how that's all going to mash together because. Municipal court, I see they're only getting like a thirty-four thousand increase, and I was just hoping that might include staffing. That will be able to give us that type of reporting, or maybe as you've already said, it may look differently from what we think we need. From code enforcement, so if we have to do something different, maybe it's not just a person, but it's a process.
Yeah, I, again, I, I think. I hear you loud and clear. We had a very, we, I said we, she, and I listened, but we had a very spirited conversation this morning about code enforcement. I know over the last two years, I've spoken to each of you on this topic. Y'all know how I move, when it becomes a, a body's priority, it becomes our priority to address. The more conversations I have with the team, I think this is more process, not necessarily money. You may disagree. But I think, again, we've had shifts in two of those areas and you've seen some results. It's time to, and look, by the way, I didn't go to B P D, they came to me and says. We hear the council loud and clear, we got an idea we think that can supercharge everything they want. I didn't go to them, they came to me, and I, that's the type of leadership I like, where they get in a lab, get creative. Have recommendations, and then they do it in partnership with other departments. This is the best form of leadership we can have on this topic, I believe from a process standpoint. As a collective, as a legislative body, code enforcement clearly is a top priority. You will see a shift in process and manpower resources to address this issue that you all care so much about.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Council Moore. I'm going to get to everybody, everybody's got a question, so.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I just want to say kudos to yourself, uh, Mr. Mayor. As well as my colleagues on the council, because I know that, you know, for several years or each year. We always, you know, make sure that we pass um, a lot of funding to go toward street resurfacing. To be done in our city, um, and, and I think that, you know, it's definitely made a difference over the years that people can feel. But the one thing that, you know, uh, really is a, is a focal point as well is the management of our, our ditches. Also, like those areas that, you know, we have a lot of this water. Running down, and I mean, we've had some serious storms, you know, the past couple of weeks.
I'm listening, I'm just trying to find a page.
Yeah, 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 we've, we've had some serious storms that have taken place the past couple of weeks. Um, and over the years that, you know, have really started to deteriorate. Some of the, the roadways, uh, some of the, the backs of people's houses, I know over, over on the eastern side of town. There are several people that, you know, live in hilly areas where this water is rushing down and it's. It's eating away at their, their property line, and so, um, just trying to find out, uh, where in the budget. Uh, are we actually putting, uh, funding towards being able to ensure that we can, you know, uh, get that situated?
So, you know, very transparent, if you turn to page hundred and fifty-four, it will show you kind of the fun, fun. Zero forty-eight related to storm management. It is not a number that's pleasing to you, but the reason is, is because this is personnel to assess what you've just described. So this team is responsible for assessing. Then there's a public works team that exists with limited resources on what they can do when there is an issue as it relates to drain, drainage. Covers, et cetera. Y'all, here's the truth on this topic. I think you all know, we had, we had the town hall meeting where we said these numbers would have been, there was a town hall meeting isolated just for this topic. This is a, a multi-billion dollar issue. That is going to require us to go through a process, and I know we got to get to a point where we can do a study as well on this. On how to phase in, um, our stormwater infrastructure, but it's going to require. Minimum. Going to the bond market, there is no way in these projects that our general operating fund, fund budget can absorb. Even one project alone, I think we know the Mezerville project, for example, is multi-million dollars. I've said this before, it feels like deja vu almost, how, how much was the project on, under the Vado District Six? I mean, on, on Sixth Avenue, South? Over two million. Mezerville, I mean, just, we know where. Cost is today's time and interest rates today's time, well prior to this, it's probably double that. When you start getting into what happens on a residential street and what happens in somebody's backyard, which I know. District Eight has a really crazy example of what's happening right now. There are a whole lot of departments that come in along with P E P, which includes legal and what we can or can't do, and the process takes forever. I'm not necessarily asking for patience on this, I think everyone's patience, patience has run out. We just need more money. And we're going to have to go to the bond market, and by the way, when we go and. Even if we can max out in six figures. We won't get to every, um, stormwater project, because I told you it's with a B, citywide.
Got you, oh, well, I appreciate that, uh, the only other question that I had is. Got you. Uh well, I appreciate that. Uh the only other question that I had is uh first a statement. Um I think one of the, the calls that I get the most um about is, you know, uh trash pickup. And I know our men and women in public works, they do an awesome job at, you know, um going around the city, picking up trash, things of that nature. Um one of the things that I'm, I'm concerned about though is cuz I've seen it for myself with my own eyes about, you know, the, the trucks um that they have. Um and just trying to make sure that the trucks that they have are adequate, that they are, you know, meeting the needs and helping them to, you know, be efficient in the trash pickup process. Um because we wanna make sure that, you know, not only are they picking up the trash, but that they are safe as well. And I've, you know, seen where these men and, and women are having to, you know, dig down inside the trashcans and, you know, pick them up, and these are some massive um massive trashcans, and that wasn't the purpose of us getting them. We wanted to make sure that this was a, a easier process, so.
I heard everything you said.
Yes, sir.
I know it looked like I was um doing two things at once.
You're good, you're good.
I was trying to find a page to direct you all to based on the comments you made. If you turn to um page one fifty-nine, I was trying to go to the Cap- Capital Improvement Fund, Fund One O Two, and then this fund, um look, if there's been, there've been three departments, the three departments I've been leading in on um because they relate to our entire enterprise. It's fleet ma- it's fleet, it's I M S, and it's capital projects. I think we all know there are unique challenges in all three. I like what we did last year, I M S and leveling up on some things we needed to do post the breach. And you all have supported, so I wanna say thank you. I turn to this page because I want you to know, the rolling stock plan includes six million, the firman is around public works is one point five. Um and then capital projects is one point five. But we're also going to level up separate from what you see here. Um it's some additional leasing options for our entire fleet. A lot of that may lean towards police, um but on the purchase side, we're gonna lean, um we're gonna depend on Cedric Roberts to work with Josh Yates and their team, how to level up on not just the maintenance of trucks, but continuing on a yearly ba- basis, which is why we call it rolling stock, to come in with more tr- newer trucks that'll be more efficient. Um I think we've gotten to a place with our um, I guess, regular household trash, way more efficient, right? But it's time to do that with everything else they do, which we know it's a lot. And all those require a different type of trucks as well, so they're gonna every year make that fleet more efficient, newer. Uh because we do have a dated fleet, that's the nicest way I can put it.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations, Mayor and budget team, you know, for um getting this together. Um I guess I wanted to start by agreeing with something my colleague said, Hunter Williams, about regular budget performance data, because I feel like, and, and I'm, it's music to my ears that you're gonna give us. Um but I do think, you know, more budget versus actual type information, even if it's just for the first three quarters of the current fiscal year, can help us contextualize, you know, some of the decisions for this budget. And it's just a part of governance, I mean, we just have to have that, so. Um, you know, I would appreciate, you know, getting that in time to let that contextualize this proposal for us. Um and when we talk about resurfacing, I really am delighted that we're spending so much. But when we just talk about the dollars alone without, you know, understanding what quantity in terms of miles or square feet, I, I'm not saying give it to me now, but I'm saying when we talk about it only in terms of dollars and we know inflation is a bear, I mean, we don't really know, you know, like, has inflation, has it cost tripled, so now we should be spending three times more to get the same, you know, surface area covered? I, I just don't have a sense of what we're getting when we talk just dollars, that's all. I mean, I don't know what a, if it should be linear, you know, miles of streets or square feet.
Where's the good news before you go to your next topic?
Okay.
Today is Tuesday, that request was put in last week. Other breakdown, how many miles, linear, et cetera, et cetera.
So.
Um, Mr. Rick Journey said he has not received, he has not received an answer yet. I know he, my question to him was have you gotten the information yet? Cuz that's a great question, cuz we ask for it too.
Okay.
When we have the detail of that, all of you all will have it in real time.
Yeah, and I love your um thought about process versus money, cuz I know, I mean, obviously, we spend a lot of money. And um I was introducing um Alicia Lumpkin to our intern, and she was saying, one of the things she worked on is process improvement, and I, I really appreciate that because, you know, there's a lot of gold in that. There's a lot of uh optimization we can get from uh just beefing up our processes and not just doing the same thing the same way year in, year out. Um so I'm just glad, you know, I don't know everything about how you're running the administrative side. Um I do feel like on things like animal control, where we've got the staff, we've got the trucks, you know, we know it's still a public safety issue, so how do we, you know, how do we level up and, you know, do something more comprehensive and strategic, do more training for our staff, uh do more training for the general public, more public education, so that people understand the leash laws and how to restrain their animals safely, how to take care of their animals. Um spay and neuter clinics are something we used to have that would go around in the communities. I don't think we have those anymore. Um but even educating people on why that's important, because, you know, maybe they don't know. So I, or maybe they don't care, I don't know, but I just feel like we gotta do more than just pick up animals. We gotta, because it's not, it's not having enough impact on the issue for our people. So, you know, we, you know, our public transporta- our transportation people are doing all this multimodal and walkability. We got bicycle lanes and great sidewalks, but people don't wanna get on them, cuz they're afraid. So.
Yeah, I think.
You know, we gotta be.
I think this is a powerful point you're making. It's not a lot to add, but the little bit I will add simply, simply is this. I definitely think animal control is very similar to code enforcement. I think, you know, I, I press with code enforcement, I press Katrina Thomas, I press legal. And again, B P D has brought it to me, but what more can we do? Cuz it's still a top issue. And when, when pressed, first question, cuz you know, it's, it's the easiest question to ask. Does more funding get you this? Do you need more funding? Do you need more people? Is the second question, right? Funding and people usually attached, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're the same thing. So what we found in our code enforcement issue is mainly process and people more so working together. I do believe on this, and I, I brought it up just from an analogous standpoint to say, this is longer than, this is a longer response than I wanna give, but I thought the analogy would be helpful to saying, we believe internally that animal control is similar, not the same, I wanna be very clear. Not the same, but similar. Um in the vein that from a process standpoint, it can be better, but we think a lot of that would be in partnership with the legislative branch of government. We believe you have a significant power in this conversation, starting with our city ordinance. And I think, um yeah, we can educate our public, but we also wanna hold the people accountable for them not taken care of. And if we can get some more teeth and a shift in the ordinance as it relates to holding people accountable, first question, Ms. Abbott's gonna ask, well, are you all gonna enforce it? Well, the answer, Ms. Abbott, is yes, I promise. Right? I can anticipate the response of if we do this, will the administration do? The answer is yes. Um I think you all have been in enough town hall meetings where Mr. Yates tell you, we pick up over two thousand animals a year, they're doing their part. There's some adult behavior here that's not working for our community, um that we need to kind of shift the focus on of holding adults and human behavior accountable and responsible for their part related to um animals in our community, bottom line. We'll, we will educate, and we will be glad to educate and communicate. Uh but we believe some change in ordinance is, needs to be attached to some enforcement accountability for bad adult behavior. For those even when educated are not gonna comply.
Yeah, so it's back to the code enforcement, yeah. But um also on the sewer system, I know you just talked about it and it's come up some. Um I do think the study to help us prioritize sort of like that sidewalk master plan, you know, helping us look at benefit cost of different projects, you know, we can't eat the whole elephant. Like you said, it's just too expensive, but, but having a system-wide or basin-wide look at, you know, what the projects need to be, so that we kind of know, you know, what these incremental bites are gonna be. Um also, I know we bought inlet covers, I feel like we did, we found, we funded some inlet covers.
That's every year, right?
Okay.
Cleaning inlets, that's, so that's part of this daily, weekly, monthly, yearly routine of inlets.
Yeah, so, so service level, service level around that just still seems like it needs a lot of help, and, and if we um, you know, if we have the trucks functioning well and we don't need as many personnel, maybe we can do more sewer inlet maintenance. Just the vacuum trucks, cuz I know those old, you know, the concrete ones crumble into the channel. So I don't know if we have a way to pull that stuff out, but um I, I, I know we've got some bad flooding and that, and it would just be nice if our system had a chance to work as well as it can. You know, what we have in place now could work as well as it can.
No, no pushback on that.
Okay.
There are a couple of things we're doing. You all lead your own cleanup days, and what we find is, it's not just the litter and illegal dumping, but it, it's causing some other issues long-term related to our city's infrastructure, the runoff. But what we also find, and Ms. Abbott, you can appreciate, well, not appreciate this, but this is an issue that I know that you have spoken to. When people have maintenance on their own private property, the person that's working on their lawn is pushing, blowing everything to the city's right away. I don't think that's really supposed to be happening. But that's definitely causing some issues as well, and so we, we got, we got a, we got an old grid is one thing, and the maintenance and cleaning them is one thing. But then, people think we're just calling out people for littering and illegal dumping. No, we're trying to send a signal, help keep our city clean, but helping keep our city clean also helps with the city's infrastructure, which we don't even publicly talk about. And then, Ms., to any of you, not just Ms. Abbott, how do we have this conversation about um people who, whether they're taking care of their own lawn or calling somebody, not doing their part and pushing things into um our system, um that complicates it and makes it more of a burden um to keep it clean. Which doesn't, which doesn't account for Mother Nature. There may be a Mother Nature event that happened today. I do not like the fact that the sun is out today and that there's a possible storm. But in this possible storm, I think we know weather, weather patterns continue to change. You don't have to take my word for it. Um you can go downstairs and talk um to the emergency management team, and they will tell you each year, it's increasing these weather patterns, these weather events we're having where significant amount of rain is dumped into our city system in a very short time. And even if you had the most updated system, the system is overwhelmed in a very short time, which causes um that water to just remain on our surface, that's either on our streets or some of these other places that you've described, the system's overwhelmed. We're afraid it'll be, it's gonna be overwhelmed um if this storm gets bad, cuz the amount of rain that will come in in a very short time.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you, and that's why I say, um, you know, we need it working as well as it can. But we know that those hundred-year rain events are happening like monthly, or, yeah, so. Uh I don't even know what FEMA calls those anymore, cuz they shouldn't call them, I mean, you know, the level of a hundred-year um storm is just happening all the time.
System is literally overwhelmed everywhere.
Yeah, so, but, but I do think we need to beef up the maintenance so that, you know, on smaller rain events, you know, it can handle it.
Let's um, let's start including if not, if not weekly, a minimum monthly updates on what P E P and public works is doing around maintenance around stormwater.
Yeah.
Just so you all can.
Yeah, cuz I don't think I've ever seen a vacuum truck. Now, I know they exist.
Mr. Yates just told me, we definitely use them. He, I, I, I made a complaint to him yesterday.
I'm at work, so.
I got a complaint about um Avenue I and Arkadelphia exits twenty fifty-nine southwest bound, based on some of our unhoused residents, kind of some of the activity happening on, happening on the, the states right away. I'm bringing this up cuz this was just yesterday, and he says, hey, we, we even do what, sometimes we have to go on state property, and they use those on state property to clean, so I know they're definitely being used on our responsibility of our city right away as well.
Okay, and my, my final question, but I'm gonna leave with a comment first, is about the capital budget, and I know we don't have it yet.
Yeah, please forgive me.
Um but on the Messer Airport Highway issue and the possible four or five million dollars to fix it, I, I mean, I do like to drive that way to the airport, so, but, but barring that, you know, that's a really important industrial corridor and, you know, trucks are moving a lot of things, and, you know, so I, I feel like that's a real important part of our economic development infrastructure for the city, and so I don't know if we're just gonna wait until there's a bond issue, but if we could find, if we could do a warrant, private placement, I just think that can't. I mean, it's not an emergency, but the margins are so thin and, you know, so gas prices, rerouting around, those things really hurt people's bids if they're moving goods.
So we've gone back and forth with this issue.
Yeah.
I don't know if you all remember, there were the temporary barriers that you can just remove. But guess what happens when the, the rain event comes down unexpected? They tell you zero chance of rain or twenty percent of chance of rain, and then it, this massive pourdown happens. That's one of the areas, the first areas to flood. And I don't know if you all, like, wanna put in context to you. You were at the last town hall meeting we had about the budget. I forgot the number, Chief Moon said, how many water rescues we had last year? The point is, I think everybody, public works, P E P and legal, have said, hey, this area, we've had too many water rescues. And it's more of a, a public safety issue now. We sincerely apologize to any existing small businesses in that area that may be impacted. Uh but that is a very complicated issue that is beyond the scope of the city. This project has been in, works with Birmingham Waterworks, the county, because we believe some of the issues there are not the city alone. And so it requires some of the best, like, outside thinking and engineers to fix this issue, very different. We wanna call it similar to the Sixth Avenue Vado, but it's very, very different because of the actual issue. Ms. Bell is not here to give the detail of that issue, she shared a little bit of it, if you remember, about thirty days ago at that town hall meeting, but they're, they're working through it, but they, they the city rather, out of an abundance of caution and prevent a water rescue or worse, someone like something fatal can happen if something happens under there as it relates to it being overfilled with water, and people think they can just drive through and then it goes left.
Well, I don't want you to open it, I want you to fix it, so, yeah, I don't want you to open it. Yeah, I wanna be safe.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Council Tate.
Um can I just ask my question? One more, it was about the capital budget.
Yes.
May I?
Quickly, please.
Okay, so the size of our capital budget, is it?
Okay, so the size of our capital budget, is it nine point five million? I mean, that's what's on this page, one fifty nine. Is that it for new projects? That's not it. Okay, do you have, do you, I know you don't have the report ready for us, but can you tell us the size of the capital budget?
I promise I don't know, I'm gonna get everything to you ASAP, don't let me make up a number.
Okay.
Usually I'm, look, I've been good at like directing you to a page, absorbing information and retaining it, but I don't have that number or
Okay.
I don't even want to ballpark it for you, but we will get it, we're gonna get you everything.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, Mayor, can we talk about um, the community violence reduction allocation?
I was gonna volunteer if you weren't gonna say nothing, because you've been too quiet this morning.
I just, I agree with everything all of my colleagues have lifted up.
So, so let me, let me, this is important, I promise, um, Counselor Tate, because you were really, really too quiet. I have my sheet here, because I was gonna volunteer breakdown, so I want to tell you what exists currently. Currently, there's two hundred twenty five thousand that's fully allocated to restore. On this proposed budget, I've already told you, we're doubling it, so this is going to four hundred and fifty thousand. This is a program I've heard you all rave about, um, the judge and Ms. Carey have stood before you and told you that they can track results, so we believe at a minimum doubling this program is gonna show real um, impact. But I also want to talk about some of the existing funding that exists. So going down this, going down this path with Ute Bean, who's leading a lot of the community violence initiatives, community violence reduction initiatives. Of course, your champion over public safety, Counselor Tate, and all her things she suggested over the last two years. Um, we got some significant federal funding that ends October one, twenty twenty six. So just a reminder, we were awarded one point nine nine eight million dollars, it's technically almost two million dollars. The remaining funds we're allowed to draw down from this grant is still one point six million dollars. And then the breakdown, um, so for example, the lift, the lift free training, we were awarded a hundred and thirty thousand. We've only drawn down five thousand, so there's still unspent a hundred and twenty five thousand. The One Hood, um, we were awarded seven hundred thousand, we've only drawn down a hundred and fourteen, it's still a hun- five hundred and eighty five thousand unspent. The H V I, um, two hundred and ninety seven thousand, we've only drawn down twelve thousand, it's still two hundred and eighty five thousand unspent. And then the N I C J R gun violence reduction strategy, we were awarded three hundred and two thousand. Um, those funds have not been, zero has been spent, so that's still one hundred percent of that remaining at three hundred and two thousand. And then the street teams, dedicated hot zones, that is something we all are looking forward to. Um, they're still going through the process, but monies haven't been drawn down, so it's seven hundred thousand remaining in that. So that breakdown, Counselor Tate, the reason why it's only one point five recommended in this budget instead of larger, because a significant amount of these funds still need to be drawn down before we add additional funds out of our general fund. We believe at the earliest, that one point five on top of these funds I just described in detail will need to be spent is probably January one of twenty twenty six, we want to make sure there is monies in the coffers. I was coming to you.
Thank you, so this is just adding to what's already.
Yeah, this is one point five on top of what I just described.
Okay.
And Ute Bean has a detailed budget, please forgive me, of that breakdown, that additional one point five, but it does exist, it's not just some number that's going into a kitty, there's a, similar to um, the unhoused initiatives. These are two new initiatives that have been important to you all. One point five million on top of the C B G grant funding for unhoused, detailed breakdown. And then one point five on top of the community violence reduction, on top of what I've just described as well. Um, so there's um, three million dollars in additional things that you all deem a priority and you care about.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Williams.
Um, just curious, do we have an indication if the, if we're going to have C B D G funding cuts with this current new bill they're discussing in Congress?
We don't, please don't even give me a headache, um, it's not, it's not towards you, if you all turn in your book to page one sixty three. This is the fifty first year of community development block grand dollars. I feel as a city, we've been amazing stewards, you all know there's a yearly process that we vet, but there's some legacy organizations in here we support, now you know, the broad things we support are housing in this fund. What is it, nine million or eight million, something like that, it's not ten. It's nine million dollars in our community development block grand dollars. It's from housing to um, some, some of the small business growth, um, a lot of it is public services, majority of it is public services, so page one sixty four, you see the organizations we support with this nine million dollars. Change Lives Christian Center is one as an example, and BeCon Birmingham, Jimmy Hill Mission and um, childcare resources and Chosens Village, it's so, it's just so many that you all personally support, we support too. Keep going on page one sixty five, gives you the breakdown of some of the emergency pro, organizations that deal in emergency issues, emergency services, from housing to programmatic that we support as well. That's five hundred and eighteen thousand of that nine million dollars. And the public services is a eight hundred and twenty one thousand, and then the housing opportunities is almost two million, um, to be exact, one point, almost eight million um, around the housing piece, so that doesn't even cover all nine million, but as you see here. Um, to his question, we got this money, right, please tell me we have this money, they can't take it. Boom, there you go, Counselor Williams, I answered your question. I should have just led with that, we have the money in our coffers.
Okay, so, because I thought that, now, I know there's been lots of iterations of this federal bill, but I was, I thought that that was also on the chopping block, but it might, I don't know what iteration we're on now.
Yeah, stressful, stressful even to respond to.
Um, so, one question I have for you is, um, with regard to equipment management, so in the performance of a, a lot of the city services, um, especially on the public safety side, police, fire, public works, um, we cannot deliver, you know, those services without well-maintained equipment. And, you know, getting back to something Counselor Moore um, talked about, you know, we've moved with intentionality towards a uniform waste bin um, system. Um, yet, you know, we still have uh, employees who are physically picking up bags out of trash cans and, and, you know, we want to get away from that because that's like our number one occupational inju- injury, um, you know. And, and it's, it's just best, we, we want to get to a different system, so, um, you know, I'm, I've heard from some residents, you know, that in that particular situation, you know, that, that they've seen vehicles that are equipped with a automatic side loader. Um, but the employees are still loading by hand because, you know, the piece of equipment is broken, so, um, again, my point is, is whether it's, you know, whatever the department, a lot of times we have to have, you know, good, what, good functioning equipment in order to perform the job, um, to deliver the, the public service to our constituents. Um, so, and you've talked about, you know, process versus budget, you know, sometimes you don't need to, it's not a, a money issue, it's how you're doing things issue, so, um, you know, I don't know if we have a um, asset management, you know, system in place yet in terms of, you know, tracking all of the city's assets um, across the board. And, and, you know, um, knowing where it is, you know, how it's being maintained, so on and so forth, but the point I'm trying to get to is, um, in terms of, you know, employees utilizing that equipment, um, I would, I would like to know that we have, you know, some sort of, I want to say like incentive uh, process around, if I'm using a piece of equipment, whether it's a, a fire truck, a, a patrol vehicle, a, um, you know, a trash truck, um, that, that piece of equipment is being utilized within the speci- specifications that it's designed for. Um, so I'll give you an example, you know, and I've heard this from um, our public works folks, let, say for example, a limb loader, um, where we're going and collecting uh, brush and rubbish and using those limb loaders, you know, to pick up stuff that's a lot heavier than it's, you know, designed for ultimately leads to, you know, um, maintenance issues, so, um, you know, that, that causes ultimately, it, it, you know, it may not break right there, but it, it, it causes problems down the road, you know, and, um, results in situations where employees are having to do things outside of the way that we would like them, you know, to do them, like pick up the trash physically out of the can, so my, um, ask, and I, you know, I think this is more on the process side, is um, in terms of, you know, department heads and supervisors managing their employees, you know, it's important to me to know that employees are using our equipment within its design specifications. And that, um, you know, I don't want to say, you know, I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, incentive a, and, and penalties for.
No, I, look, there are a couple of things, um, there is a process that exists. I am not the person to tell you, because I don't know what it is, but I am confident, um, as it relates to the use of city vehicles. Um, there is an accountability process that, just one example, for Public Works alone, Josh Yates, Terry Davis could explain to you. So that's one way to answer that, here's another way to answer that, it goes to, I think Valerie Abbott, Counselor Abbott was the first person with a question comment. She says she would like to know, uh, what was not, um, honored from a request standpoint. But please recall, I told you that three departments have been kind of leaning in on, because they touch the entire enterprise, Fleet is one of them. Fleet actually gets their requests, not just for their department, they have incoming requests for all departments. There's a total request from the Fleet of twenty two million dollars, I believe, was it twenty two or twenty six? Twenty, twenty five, it was like twenty five, twenty six, just want you to know on this budget, we're not proposing or recommending twenty five, twenty six, it's because we can't afford it in one fiscal year, all right, so that's the answer, that's verbal, you wanted it writing, I will give it to you, but that's an example of, well, tell me what, all right, Sergeant Roberts, you leave Fleet, you work with these departments, tell me a realistic number in one fiscal year that gets the train moving as it relates to our rolling stock. What would be the top three key departments, well, that's easily in no particular order, police, fire, public works. They move in public um, vehicles more than anybody, so from a process standpoint alone, um, what police are doing to make sure police are being accountable for those vehicles, especially with this new take home car pol- program, there has to be a policy attached to that. Um, what fire is doing, let's ask Chief Moon, because I don't know the answer, but I'm pretty sure a process exists, because they alone have to go through rigorous processes. And then public works, I know Yates just talked about chips and trucks and cameras and all of that, so something exists on top of the equipment that's been embedded in these trucks as well. So yes, a process exists, but I mentioned the not being able to honor that money, because going back to Sergeant Roberts, tell me what you can do with the max number in one year. That's a combination of what you see in this book on that page I directed you to as it relates to rolling stock, but it's also a leasing program. We believe with those, majority of three departments, moving away from the um, continued breakdown of old fleet, we can get to a point of just not new equipment, new trucks, but making sure that there's not breakdown or mismanagement of the use of the new equipment as well. I hope I answered your concern.
Yeah, thank you.
And I hope I attached it to, as an example, your number one question. Um, what you're seeing here is not reflected with the lease program, because that doesn't require necessarily proposed budget, but it's not their total request either, almost twenty five million dollars.
Counselor Tate.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just also want to throw this in as well, I know we've been talking about, you know, the trash and all, but what does it look like reminding people to, um, not overload the trash can, because I, I see that a lot, people exceeding, you know, what needs to be in there. But also, how do we gently and kindly remind people to purchase a new, a, a trash bin, if you've got more trash than you you um, anticipate having, and also putting your bins up? Because I see bins blown in the street and people, and I, I, I've seen this with my own eyes, when, you know, the trash man picks up on our street, um, where I've seen cans overloaded and they having to get out the truck and make some adjustments to, for the lift to, you know. So, I mean, I think we need to kind of put that back out there, maybe send some people educational information and continue to remind people, if you exceeded your ninety six gallon, then this is what it looks like purchasing another can.
I totally agree, um, but in the ordinance, there's an ordinance that's clear and there are violations, right? But I think, I think we can never stop educating our public on something, this, has it been two years now, three? Or two years? Maybe a little bit more, we should, we should never stop educating the public as well as here's what you should do, if you've got so many people in your house, oh, we recommend a second bin, dah 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 dah. Y'all raving around to?
I think we've exhausted all the comments and questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it's eleven o'clock. Oh, okay. It's good to see y'all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, um, our agenda's a little different, um, do we need to vote on item one? So, can we read item one, please?
Yes, sir, item one. A resolution setting a public hearing in the council chambers on the mayor's proposed budget, and I'd like to apologize, Counselor Smithman, it has submitted by Counselor Abbott, but it should be count, uh, Counselor Smithman is chairperson of Budget and Finance Committee.
Any questions?
This is the person, I have to read it, after, I have to read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so whereas the mayor has submitted to the city council the proposed general fund budget, capital budget and budget messages for fiscal year, July first, twenty twenty five through June thirty of twenty twenty six, and whereas is incumbent upon the city council to determine a place and time for a public hearing on said budget, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, that the required public hearing on the proposed general fund and capital budgets shall be held on June fourth, twenty twenty five, in the council chambers, third floor Birmingham City Hall, beginning at five thirty P M. Um, the city clerk is hereby authorized to cause for publication of the public hearing, which includes place and time of said hearing and a, a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Birmingham, no less than seven days. No less than seven days before the date of such hearing. Be further resolved that members of the public can view and participate online or by phone via WebEx. Citizens who have joined by computer and wish to speak to the item may use the raise hand button in the WebEx application. If you have joined by phone, you'll be given the opportunity to speak after recognition of the speakers using the online platform. If you have joined the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial star three when prompted during the hearing. Please be patient. Speakers will be, will be given the usual three-minute limit for comments adopted this swing of date of May two thousand twenty-five. Submitted by Councilor Smithman, Budget and Finance Committee here.
Any questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, item one is approved. Well, we, I'm going on our agenda order of business as it's written on the agenda, so are there any additional communications from the mayor's office? Okay, are there any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, sir, we did not receive any.
Alright, now I'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor. Request the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing. May request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we read, please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page two with items two, three, and four. Page three, we have items five, six, six, I'm sorry, and eight. Page four, we have items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Page five, we have items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Then we go over to page. Sixteen, we have items. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Page seventeen, we have items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Page eighteen, we have items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Page nineteen. We have items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Page twenty, we have items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three. Twenty-one, we have items thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six. Twenty-two, items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty. Page twenty-three. Items forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. Page twenty-four, we have items forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. And that concludes the consent agenda and we do have one addendum.
Alright, do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counselor Williams.
Thank you. Can we please remove item twenty-seven and twenty-eight on pages eighteen and nineteen?
Alright. Counselor Smithman.
Yes, I would like to take items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And twenty-four on pages sixteen and seventeen off consent.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item eighteen. Is item fifty-four eligible to be added? As a first, I think it's an emergency.
Item fifty-four.
The addendum. Can that be added?
We have an objection, so, alright. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page twenty, item thirty-three, I just wanted to ask. South Dade Air Conditioning and Refrigeration Incorporated is going to do. Infrastructure improvements for the Star Development. And I want to know what an air conditioning and refrigeration is doing to the infrastructure. On Twenty-Fifth Street North.
Mr. President, we'll, we'll get an answer from Ms. Denise Bell for you, so Counselor, if you'd like to remove that, we'll get that answer for you.
I can, I can answer it if you'd like.
Yeah?
If y'all, or if we can ask for Ms. Bell.
All I want is an answer.
Yeah, so on, on this item, because I previously had the same question when we originally passed it, this, that, when it went out for bid. This company also has a, like an infrastructure group, so this is the infrastructure group. Grouping price that we actually passed for the stuff that's going around the Star Development, so that the changing of that street. Along with the resurfacing in sidewalk, ADA ramps, all that kind of stuff. Is act, the lowest bidder was actually this company that's name does not vibe with the actual work that's being done.
Okay, so it's air conditioning, refrigeration, and paving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
Makes perfect sense to me.
I'd like to go ahead and take it off of the consent agenda because it is a change order item for a significant amount.
That's, that's fine. I was just blown away by the air conditioning and refrigeration, but I'm sure they'll fix that. And then on page twenty-four, I just had a question about why the fire department needs carpentry, carpentry tools. And related parts and accessories. Like, what are they doing?
We'll get Chief Moon to update you on that, Counselor. We'll get Chief Moon to update you on what they're doing. So again, if you want to remove it, we can get him to come and answer.
So item forty-six on page twenty-four. Alright.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We have several items on the consent agenda that are public hearing items. Are there any members of the public that wish to remove any of those public hearing items that are marked for consent? Hearing none, we are ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm of approval.
Alright.
I didn't quite catch the voices. I'm sorry.
Let's just say, Smithman and Alexander.
Thank you.
I work for everybody.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The consent agenda is approved. Our first item is item number seven, I believe.
Yes, sir. We're going to go item number seven, which is on page three. A resolution relative to the application of IQAP during business as easy pull and pay. For junk dealer's license to be used at two Seventeenth Street West, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two zero eight. For the operation of a junkyard and the hearing of our interested parties. And so we just need a motion on that.
This is a public hearing item, so I'll turn it over to our Chair of Public Safety, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to refer this item back to Public Safety because they have some fire and health. Things that they need to complete.
Alright, so that's a motion to refer the item back to Public Safety Committee.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright.
Then our next item, we will go over to item number eighteen. Which is on page sixteen. An ordinance to further amend the grants fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. By appropriating two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the mayor's office for city walk maintenance. Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs grant per award received.
Alright, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to understand, it looks like a DECA is providing some support. And I know when, when this came up before, the mayor mentioned that several stakeholders needed to get together to come up with a plan. Do we, do we have any updates on it? Because I feel like it's a great amenity for our citizens. That doesn't really have a sustainable maintenance plan and I don't want it to get lost. And maybe if we don't have an update today, we could add it to a committee of the whole agenda. Just to keep up with how we're coming with getting a maintenance plan in place for it.
Mr. President? Counselor, so we have Ms. Denise Bell, Director of our Capital Projects. She's waiting outside as she can come in and speak to the item. Ms. Denise?
Thank you.
While we're reading on Ms. Bell, I just wanted to. Make it clear that we're, we're receiving these funds from a DECA. So these are grant funds that are being received for the purpose of city walk maintenance.
But why are we receiving them and not the BJCC? I guess Ms. Bell can answer.
Just a second, Counselor.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. President, I'm curious what the total maintenance cost, you know, O and M cost is too.
It's right under two million a year or something like that.
Two million a year?
Yeah, which is, which is all in, under two million, which I think is all-inclusive, including like insurance, security, maintenance.
Staffing.
All of it. But you know, we didn't, we didn't take responsibility of this item, of maintaining it. It's part of the agreement with ALDOT, they were going to pay for it. So while we would apply for a DECA grant and not it go through, through the BJCC, which is a governmental institution, I don't want to set a precedent.
Alright, do y'all want to table this while we're waiting? So motion to table. Alright.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, this motion's tabled. Item nineteen, please.
Item nineteen. Is an ordinance to further amend the donations fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. By appropriating ten thousand dollars to park and recreation for safety cameras at Memorial Park. Per donation received from Jefferson County Commission.
Motion on the item.
Second.
It was Williams and Tate. Any questions on this item, item nineteen, Crystal, or Counselor Smithman, I think you took it off consent. Okay, so, alright.
I do have a question since it's off consent. Are these going to be linked to the crime center and are these those? What do they call it? The cameras they're using? The funny name.
You mean the flock camera?
Flock, yeah, the flock of cameras. Are these flocks that are going to be connected to the real-time crime center?
Probably not if they're in a park. If they're in a park, I would guess that it would be more of a PTZ camera where you can actually have a visual of what's going on. You know, a flock is more of like an LPR type camera. It's more, more for license.
So who's going to be watching these cameras? I mean, watching what's on them?
Nah, I can't answer all these questions. I'm just, I don't understand the technology. I don't know.
So does anybody know? Who's going to be watching?
Chief Sparks, we have a question about item nineteen with respect to safety cameras in parks. Do we know how parks and recreation monitors or utilizes those cameras?
Ms. Sinead and Mrs. Bennett and Ron Hicks are going to come and speak to it, but from our understanding, they're supposed to be synced with our real-time crime center. To make sure that there's tracking and then follow-up. So is there any other detail that you'd like beyond just the syncing and coordination with real-time?
Yeah, that was really the question is what kind of cameras are in there and are they monitored by somebody, anybody?
So they're synced, the specific kind of camera, if we need to provide the details on it, we can, but they are synced to the real-time crime center and being monitored with them.
Well, good. That was the question. Thank you.
Is that sufficient response? Okay. We're ready for the vote or we want more information? Okay, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, item nineteen is approved.
My abstention.
Alright. Item twenty, please.
Okay, the next item is item twenty on page seventeen. An ordinance to further amend the donations fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. By appropriating five thousand dollars to park and recreation for improving lives of people. Through physical activities and education to Mem, to Memorial Park per don, per donation received from Jefferson County Commission.
I'm of approval.
Alright, moved in second. And any questions on this item? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then my abstention.
Okay, item twenty is approved. Item twenty-one, please.
Item twenty-one. Is a resul, is an ordinance, I'm sorry, to further amend the donations fund budget. For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. By appropriating ten thousand dollars to park and recreation for equipment to MLK Recreation Center. Per donation received from Jefferson County Commission.
I'm of approval.
Ms. Abbott and Williams, any questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then also note my abstention.
Okay, item twenty-one is approved. Item twenty-four, please.
Alright, item twenty-four. An ordinance to further amend the donations fund budget for the fiscal year. An ordinance to further amend the Donations Fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, by appropriating five thousand dollars to Park and Recreation for renovation and beautification of Harrison Park, pro-de- pro-donation received from Jefferson County Commission.
I move approval.
Abbott and Williams, any questions? We're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, item twenty-four is approved. Item twenty-seven, please.
Item twenty-seven on page eighteen. An ordinance to further amend the General Fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, by transferring four hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and two cents from Information Management Systems Non-Capital Equipment, four hundred fifty-two thousand, ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents from Information Management Systems Other Professional Services, three hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents from Information Management Systems Maintenance Software Maintenance, eighty-five thousand dollars from Information Management System Maintenance Mainframe Maintenance, six hundred, two thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars from Info- Information Management Systems Maintenance Desktop Maintenance, two hundred, nine thousand dollars from Information Management Systems Network Support Tech Maintenance, two million, five hundred thousand dollars from Information Management Systems Audio, Visual, Other Professional Services, and appropriating four million, seven hundred twenty thousand, twenty-one dollars and forty-two cents to Non-Departmental Transfer to Fund One-O-Two Capital Improvement, and to further amend the Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, by appropriating two million, two hundred twenty thousand, twenty-one dollars, forty-two cents to IMS One-O-Two CP, zero-zero-three-eight-seven-one-A, IMS Computer Software Professional Service, and two million, five hundred thousand dollars to IMS One-O-Two CP, zero-zero-three-eight-seven-one-B, IMS Telecom Project.
I move approval.
Abbott and Tate. Council Williams.
Thanks, Daryl. Yeah, so on this, this is a ton of money being moved. I don't really understand what it's for, it looks like a bunch of gobbledygook, a bunch of technical stuff we don't understand, but the, the point of the matter is, whether we understand it or not, we're moving money from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Budget Fund, and we haven't had an update of where we are on either of those funds, so how can I say that I'm gonna move ten million dollars-ish without knowing where we are? That is not, that's, you know, it's not like a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not going to be vote, until we know where we are on each of those, I can't vote for that.
Chief Sparks, is, uh, anybody from EMS, uh, IMS, uh, available to speak to this issue?
Yes, sir, Mr. Daryl Burrows is right outside. Come on in, Mr. Burrows.
Good morning, my name is Daryl Burrows, I served the city of Birmingham as Chief Information Officer.
Could you explain to us, um, you know, what's going on here? This is a significant, you know, amount of funds that we're transferring, um, so.
Yes, sir. So we have a number of projects, our projects don't end at the end of the fiscal year. They continue on, um, we probably need to look at the way we actually budget some of our projects, but we have a number of projects, including, um, some projects with the Police Department, some professional services, contracts associated with a number of the projects, including deploying about six hundred computers, uh, we have approximately twenty, uh, we have approximately fifty percent of that money that's going to, uh, Crossplex, uh, to, for wifi, for the timing systems, for audio/video boards, they've never been replaced in the last twelve years. We have audiovisual issues at, uh, Legion Field and Boutwell as well. So, um, we just have a number of projects, uh, that, uh, associated with that money. Also, we have about a three hundred to a half million, just depending, uh, for wifi, uh, additional coverage and improvements around the city. Uh, we're not exactly sure of that number because of vendors are concerned about tariffs, and so they kinda give us a range in terms of what things will cost.
So, Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Burrows, so in this, you know, we're moving money from the General Fund, which I assume was in IMS, that, so you have to forgive me, because the only supporting document that we have is this one pager.
Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of to be desired there, but, um, is, I'm confused. So how much money this fiscal year did you have in the Capital Improvement Budget that, that was supposed to address these issues?
We, we have no money in the Capital Improvement for this year.
So y'all weren't allocated any money? And then, I guess, is this, this is moving out of your department because it's surplus?
No, 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 it's not surplus. Uh, we have those fund, those funds have to be spent on projects, um, that are ongoing, uh, including our cloud migration, uh, our, uh, unstructured storage migration, and some other projects as well, um, all, all of this money, none of it is, is surplus money.
Okay, so it was already allocated for, so this, these are requests that you made last year for this fiscal year?
Correct, sir.
I'm good.
We ask the same questions at Budget and Finance, so it's not clear.
Councilor Clark.
So it sounds like they're just trying to keep them from lapsing at June thirtieth, so that you can continue to execute the projects?
Yes, ma'am.
From the capital budget, which doesn't expire, but one of these things is called non-capital equipment. Does it matter that it would be classified as capital? I mean, uh, I mean, it's name, the name of the
Those were.
Item is non-capital equipment.
Right, those were.
Could that one be taken out?
Well, I mean, you know, that's.
Yes, it's put non-capital in the capital budget. I don't know.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, we don't determine those designations in terms of the capital account codes. I did request some different account codes on the transfers, uh, something may have got lost in translation on that. Uh, but I plan to follow back up, uh, with finance on trying to get those structured differently.
Okay, well, maybe our budget, um, maybe the finance person could tell us, because I just don't know if it's okay to put non-capital equipment in the capital budget. I don't know, simple question. I mean, I get what he's doing, and I, I don't want him to be interrupted, but that's just my only question. If something's classified as non-capital, can we then move it to capital? Or do we need to reclassify it? It's a budget question, I guess.
We're, we're getting, uh, our finance team up to be able to answer that specific question about the designation. What Mr. Burrows noted is right, what he, he, they don't designate the code that it's listed up under, so we'll get finance to answer that.
Okay, so would that be a motion to table until we get that answered, or some, some direction on it?
Yeah, motion to table item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, uh, item has been tabled, next item, please.
The next item is item number twenty-eight on page nineteen. An ordinance to further amend the General Fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, by transferring one million, five hundred thousand dollars from capital projects, professional fees, consulting fees, and appropriate one million, five hundred thousand dollars to non-departmental transfer to Fund One-O-Two Capital Improvement, and to further amend the Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, by appropriating one million, five hundred thousand dollars to DCP Emergencies Planed Projects.
I move approval.
Second. Alright, so Abbott and Quinn, um, questions?
Yeah, same, same premise as the last time, um, no supporting information except for this one pager, what's, what are we doing?
Mr. President, we have Ms. Denise Bell, who's here to speak to the item council.
Okay.
Hello, Denise Bell serves as Director of Capital Projects. So, um, as you know, our projects extend beyond the fiscal year. It depends on when we start our projects. So we have projects out right now, consultant agreements out right now, that I have to pay the bills for. So what I'm doing is moving the funding from general funds to capital so we can continue. Those things include construction, engineering, inspection, those things include, um, I have this, CCTV, I think that item, um, will be before you soon. It is to cover some ARPA-related, um, projects as well, where we ran short in funding as well. I'm sorry. I do not know what to do.
Okay, that's fine, I don't have any more questions on this item.
Thank you.
Alright. We're ready for the vote.
Okay, uh, item twenty-eight?
Yes.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, item twenty-eight is approved. We ready to go back to CityWalk, uh, item eighteen?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, so there are two pieces of that.
Need a motion to pick, uh, item eighteen up from the floor?
Motion to, um, take up item eighteen.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Alright, so Mr. Ryan Jackson is pass- passing out updates on the maintenance repairs. Uh, we also have Ms. Adrian Stitt, who's outside, who will answer some of the logistical questions around the grant matching, Ms. Adrian.
Good morning, Adrian Stitt, I serve as Director in the Grants Division for, in our Finance Department.
Okay, so the question is, is that, is why are we receiving, you know, these ADECA funds? Um, because BJCC is under contract to operate CityWalk. So why are these funds coming to the city, uh, versus, you know, BJCC? Or are we going to contract with BJCC to, you know, provide a portion of the funding for CityWalk? Does that summarize that?
Yeah, and as, I mean, these are routine things that, that the agreement, uh, between BJCC and ALDOT states that they will do, so what's going on?
Well, this money was allocated through, to us, through the state, um, via ADECA. This was part of the, the, um, can't remember the act, but last year's general fund for the state. Um, they're giving us this money to assist us, so our plan is to work with BJCC to contract to do CityWalk maintenance.
Mayor?
I apologize. Chad Mitchell's not present, and Ms. Adrian would have only just received the funds. But when we had reach, we had reach out from the state, um, about, you know, multiple parties coming in to assist, um, CityWalk, which is a, is a state property. So this conversation around the city, county, um, private sector, BJCC, and all, all four of us supporting the state. So we, we questioned, hey, could we do our general fund, are there other sources we could get? And I apologize, I wasn't in here, when you asked the question, explain why are we doing this? But we applied for that grant and received it, which is for our portion to support CityWalk. Does that make sense?
It does, but I guess that goes.
I apologize.
No, I guess that goes, you know, this has been a constant conversation that I know you, sitting on the board, have been a part of. I've, I've had reach out from different elected folks and blah, blah, blah. So the, you know, the original agreement obviously was, uh, was a, was somewhat of a settlement, and, and I think Daryl could best, you know, run down memory lane on that one, but, um, you know, it was, it was a settlement in which ALDOT promised that they would pay for the upkeep of, of CityWalk.
Correct.
It's right under two million dollars a year, they're not paying the BJCC, who is contractually
Correct.
The physical executor of, of the, of the maintenance and insurance and everything else. So are we setting a precedent that now we're going to be on the hook for participating and maintaining that state property?
No, we're not, I don't believe that, so here's the deal. This is one hundred percent state property, and I'm like you, we want the state to do their part. In my other capacity as a board member of the BJCC, uh, we've leveled up, um, you know, our engagement with the state about, hey, this is your responsibility, you're asking BJCC to manage this property. Well, separate apart from that, the Jarvis Leonard, as well as, um, Director Cooper, came to the city and says, could you all assist us, which, you know, said what does that look like, well, can you help engage other partners to the table? Like, we know it's our property, but could you get a partnership, um, similar to the Greenway? So can you get the city, the county, the private sector, and BJCC to come to the table with the small portion, um, to assist us with this? So we said yes. The way we look at that, that's just for this one, one fiscal year, not anything beyond. But we started with the same premise and agreed with the premise you stand on, and I know Council Queen's standing on it, because we were both plaintiffs. This is your responsibility, state. BJCC saying the same thing, this is your responsibility, state. And BJ, I definitely stand with BJCC and them saying, we're supposed to just manage this for you, but it's your property, so.
Ag- agree a thousand percent, and that's, I think that's some of my concern around this item is, I, I get being a team player, and I get going through ADECA to get the grant, and I think that's great, I really do. But, um, you know, when ALDOT has their largest budget ever, and we're not getting the support that we need on a few things, being one of them, interstate lighting being another.
Homeless encampments being a third, keep going.
Yeah, so it, it's sort of like, you know, where is this largest budget in ALDOT history going? If, if they can't support Birmingham?
Right, and I'll also point out that, you know, although it wasn't presented this way, um, when it was being talked about to the public, um, the city did, you know, put in a significant amount of funding for CityWalk, a large chunk of CityWalk. That's not how it was brought to us in the beginning, but, um, we have a whole bunch of skin in the game already in terms of making CityWalk happen. Mayor, is it correct to assume that, um, BJCC itself was not a eligible applicant for ADECA funds? I know in some cases, you have to be a governmental entity to receive funding.
The truth is, I don't know, we, we didn't even think about BJCC, the county, anybody else when we applied. We thought about, you know, what could our portion be? And this fell under eligible thing to apply for. So forgive me for not knowing.
Any follow-up?
I was just gonna say, uh, no, I, this isn't, this is just for more public consumption. I was just gonna say, uh, no, I, this isn't, this is just for more public consumption. Uh, you know, I do appreciate the idea of being a team player when it, when, when other entities ask us to do it, because we also ask that of other, other entities all the time. So, um, obviously, there's no reason to hold this up. But if you get the list of what's going on at this property, I think that a lot of these upgrades are things that we get calls about, that the public wants to see, especially when it comes to signage, public safety issues, correcting some of those uneven sidewalks, um, and then, you know, first aid stations, and then there's a lot of other, uh, things that, you know, that we have gotten calls about. So, I am glad to see that that work is being done, and I want to thank your team, uh, Rand, Mr. Mayor, for the application of the ADECA grant, because I know that, um, you know, sometimes it's a hard knee-jerk reaction to be a team player. You know that from me. But, but, um, but I am, but I am glad that we, that we're gonna get this list of, this two-page list of things fixed that the public has, has asked for. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Counselor Abbott?
And this probably doesn't matter too much, since we're through talking about this, but when I was young and new on the council back in two thousand one, Martha Espy and I applied for a grant from ADECA, and we were told that only city municipalities and governmental entities could ask. And we said, well, we're part of a governmental entity. I said, no, you don't understand, it needs to come from the city. You know, the state doesn't give money to individual council members who apply for grants, but we didn't know that. So, we spent a lot of time working on something for nothing, but I did learn not to apply for grants by myself, so.
Got it. All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item eighteen is approved.
Okay, we need a motion to pick up item twenty-seven from the table.
So, get a, item twenty-seven, motion to take up item twenty-seven.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, so we were waiting for some effort, additional information on item twenty-seven.
Mr. President, um, Chief Sparks has stepped out to get our finance team and get the clarification, so they're going to-
I know you have to continue your agenda, she's, came in, we need the clarification, so stepped out. She's coming back, so if you wanna, so if this pleases the council, this body, you keep going, um, with everything else you have on the agenda, and uh, we can pick up this table issue as soon as everyone comes back in with the information that this body needs. I apologize, sir.
Yeah, all right, so, motion to table again.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next item then would be item number thirty-three. Item thirty-three is on page uh, twenty. A resolution accepting change order number one to the contract with South Dade Air Conditioning and Refrigeration, Inc., doing business as SDAC, Selma, Alabama, in the amount of four hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-four cents for the Twenty-Fifth Street North infrastructure improvements, the Star Development, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with South Dade Air Conditioning and Refrigeration, Inc., doing business as SDAC, and substantially the form contained within the change order documents, and in accordance with said, be it provided that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation. No motion?
That was Alexander and Smitherman. Counselor Abbott?
Item thirty-three, there was no documentation in my packet that told one word about this, unless I just couldn't find it. So, we need someone to explain to us what this change order is for. What kind of refrigeration are we putting on Twenty-Fifth Street? But it's a pretty hefty change order.
Director Bell, can you please tell, tell us what this change order is all about?
Okay, Denise Bell, Capital Projects Director. The change order is the water main break that we experienced, um, during construction, along with multiple unknown utility conflicts as well. So, we experienced some heavy issues in this area that we had to actually address.
So, we caused, we caused the main break by-
So, it's the old main, and we did not know the shallowness of it. It was not the regular required footage below the surface, and so, yes, we did hit it, we did not know. No one knew.
The people who mark on the pavement where all the utilities are, they had an oops?
We had an oops, so we didn't know that it was there. There are utilities on the ground that there is no documentation that we have for, or no one didn't not know that it was there, and it happens. Um, stormwater, sewer issue we, we encountered as well. So, it happens, unfortunately, it's a congested urban area, so this is not abnormal. Um, just not something we like to do, but we had to do it.
Yeah, for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, well, it does bring up the fact that there was no documentation in our packet regarding this, like nothing, and so, maybe we could get documentation in the future? You know, the backup information that we received that causes us to have four hundred and seventy-five pages to read?
Mr. President, I apologize, uh, Ms. Abbott, I apologize to all of you all. We never a team member that's critical to these packages that were, was not present, um, has been out for a while, we'll make sure we tighten it up, and it doesn't, doesn't happen again.
Okay, I, I do have a question. So, explain to me how it falls on the city of Birmingham, um, you know, that we incur this expense, uh, rather than the, the contractor? Because our city, the city wasn't out there on a backhoe digging up the street. So, the South Dade Air Conditioning and Refrigeration was. So, how does it fall on us that the contractor hit the water main and we're responsible for paying for it?
Okay, that's, that's a good question. So, the contractor's contract is, is, is something that we basically set forth. So, we make sure that we understand what's out there as well as the contractor. It was shallow, we didn't know it was shallow. The contractor would not have known it was shallow, it was an old main. We can't hold the contractor accountable for that when they've got, they did their due diligence and coordination. Nobody knew it was that shallow, that's the issue.
Okay. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, uh, my question was just, is that the complete scope is just fixing the break, fixing the pipe? Are they?
No, it was just, it was the water main break and all the, all the other items that came with repairing it, and the sod and all that, that, that we had to actually replace. It's also the utility conflicts, we had other utility conflicts on site, as well as a storm sewer main that we knew nothing about as well. Yep. That's some things we just didn't know in this, this urbanized area. We had surveyed, but it didn't show up.
All right, any additional? I'm not seeing anything, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item thirty-three is approved. Back to item twenty-seven, motion to take up item twenty-seven again.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, the, item twenty-seven is before us. Um, the question is, is how can we move non-capital equipment funds over into a capital improvement account?
Diana Bolden, I serve as Chief Financial Officer. So, on this item, I'm sorry. So, when we get to the end of the fiscal year, we may have contracts in place for, for different things. When we get close to the end of the fiscal year and we have funds in general fund, these funds were actually in general fund. If they don't spend these funds by six-thirty, they will lapse, they will lose the funding. Well, these items that they have, uh, it's one contract with Axon, and the other one is professional services, this won't be done by six-thirty. So, it's common practice for several, for all departments, when we get to the end of the fiscal year, if they're not going to use those funds in certain accounts, that they are able to move those into Fund One-O-Two so that they don't lapse. So, it's not that they, so it's basically that they can't get to using the funds before six-thirty. So, they move it to capital improvement in order to ensure that those funds are in place for the project that did not get completed. So, non-capital equipment could be computer, like computers, because if they're not over five thousand dollars, they're not considered capital. So, those items would be all items that IMS would be procuring, or, and then other services that they would have, that falls under these different, um-
Right, so, for Counselor Clark's benefit, so, what, the point that you made just there, that's important, is items under five thousand dollars are not considered capital. Um, so, these, these non-capital equipment could be low-cost equipment items.
Yes, sir.
All right, got it. Any additional questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item twenty-seven is approved. And I've lost track of where we are.
The next item is item number forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-six is on page twenty-four.
Okay.
A resolution approving, I mean, approving payment to Zorro Tools, Inc., Jamesville, Wisconsin, for carpentry tools and related parts and accessories, in the amount of two thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents for the City of Birmingham Fire Department, in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Second.
Alexander and Al, Abbott. Counselor Abbott?
Well, we were going to get an answer from the Fire Department, what they're using these carpentry tools for, and I don't, is anybody here from the Fire Department?
Counsel, we're going to check, Chief Moon had to step away for another event, but he has a visiting, neither's on his way.
Just say this, we want to be respectful of the council's time, if that requires us to not, to move this to next week, if it doesn't require bidding again or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I move for a one-week delay, that'll just get it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, item fifty-one.
Item fifty-one. A res, on page twenty-five. A resolution setting a public show call's hearing to consider the matter of revoking the business license issue to happy hour hangout at twenty-four seventeen Avenue C, Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, one, eight. Said hearing shall be held at the council's regular meeting in the council chambers, third floor in the city hall in Birmingham, Alabama, on Tuesday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at nine thirty-eight AM. Make a motion, please.
All right.
I'm over approval.
Alexander and Smitherman.
Those are your go-to movers?
I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to listen.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're ready for the vote.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item fifty-one is approved, item fifty-two.
Okay, item fifty-two is a resolution, amending resolution number seven ninety-six dash twenty-five, adopted by the council, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, setting a public hearing June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, to consider the adoption of a resolution assending to the vacation of the following, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-five square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Tenth Court North and Tenth Avenue North, and perpendicular to and between Third Street North and Fifth Street North, located at three twelve, Tenth Avenue North, Birmingham, so that the owner can consolidate the property on behalf of the City of Birmingham owner. And this is to change the hearing date to June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. This is case number twenty-twenty-five dash zero, 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 one, eight.
I'm over approval.
All right, that was Abbott and Smitherman. Any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item is approved, item fifty-three, please.
Item fifty-three is a resolution, amended resolution number seven ninety-seven dash twenty-five, adopted by the council, May thirteenth, setting a public hearing June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, to consider the adoption of a resolution assending to the vacation of the following, four hundred eighty-one square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Trilby Street and Hibernian Street, and perpendicular to and between Lacy Road and Maple Avenue, located at six oh five Lacy Road, Birmingham, so that the owner can consolidate property on behalf of the City of Birmingham owner. And this is to change the hearing date to June twenty-fourth.
I'm over approval.
Abbott and Williams? All right. Any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item fifty-three is approved. Um, item fifty-four, please, addendum item.
Item fifty-four on the addendum. It is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an emergency contract with Steadfast Resources LLC to provide immediate emergency asbestos abatement for the property located at seventeen hundred Twenty-Fifth Street North, Birmingham, formerly known as FD MacArthur Elementary School. The total rate, uh, shall not exceed one hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The abatement is necessary due to the severely deteriorated condition of the structure, and in accordance with the emergency provisions of section thirty-nine dash two dash two E-one, Code of Alabama, the condition of the building requires the need for emergency work to remediate materials posing a health risk to individuals who may come into contact with the building.
I'm over approval.
That was definitely Abbott and Tate. All right. Discussion on this item? Counselor Woods?
Uh, yes, sir, was interested in kind of the overall plan for this property, I know, um, you know, I, I kind of see the explanation here around emergency, but are we tearing this down, or is there, is there more of a, a plan or just a base here?
Yeah, there, there are two different things happening here at this exact same time. One is, um, there is a request for a proposal process for the space, not the building, for the land. The land happens to include this building that has, you know, it's been, um, empty for how many years now? How long has this building been empty? More than twenty years. I think we are at a point where, um, whatever happens, happens, happens to it, um, based on this asbestos study. We want to take advantage of the interruption that's already taking place now, that's leading to revitalization, and that we don't disrupt anything post. And so, we're, we're gonna receive some, um, proposals probably in the month of June, at the exact same time, being a good neighbor, understanding what's happening around that space. The properties we are responsible for, we want to move aggressively on. And so, um, Ms. Smiley has led this effort, she can provide you all the detail you want, if there's additional questions post what I'm gonna say, what's happening here. But we believe that, um, building is beyond, you know, a course that's not prohibitive as it relates to revi, revitalizing that existing building, that doesn't stop or remove the current process we're in, um, because it's for adaptive, uh- um, because it's for adaptive, uh, reuse of the actual land that exists there, not just the building. Any context you want to provide?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this kind of throws me off doing abatement.
Say again?
Kind of throws me off during a ba- doing abatement separate from some sort of demolition or renovation.
That's the, I mean, that's the next step we want to remove, that's the next step we want to get to. But, you know, process-wise, this takes a while to even just get to the point where you can get this before you to then get to the point of a rehab or reconstruction. But either way it goes, if we wanted to, you know, exercise the option of demolition, we had to do this first. Then this, this step alone is costing more time than we want it to anyway. But we still have to go through the, um, legal steps, um, to get to the point of if we want to demo. Um, but we want to, again, take advantage of the timing now where all this deconstruction is happening in walking distance of it already. And this building y'all has significant amount of asbestos in it based on the study. Did we provide in the study?
There's a, yeah, there's a report or something.
Counselor Clark? Or Counselor Woods, were you finished?
Uh, yeah, so I mean, my when we're talking about, I guess, what, what are the legal hurdles to clear the demo, 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 uh, demolish?
Can I let the expert who has literally led this project daily, weekly, monthly speak towards everything happening here? Let's just start over and give them pretty much how we got to this point and then what we, what does this step include and why?
Dating back to, there's been a lot of history on this site, but dating back to last fall, our community development department has been under a process seeking someone to redevelop the site. And that process is still going on, but in the interim, we know that the site is continuing to deteriorate and it is, it's a hazard for us. And so we want to address that. So engaging our capital projects team, community development, PEP, all of our city experts, we should have a say on this site. We've convened them and asked for their recommendations on how to move forward. And what the mayor said is true. What we were informed is that whether we, um, decide to retain this structure or to demolish it, we had to discern what hazards existed in the site. So now that we know where they are, we're seeking to address those immediately. Um, because there's also some information that has come to our attention that requires us to just address it now, we don't want to delay that. And so that's what we're asking is for your permission to move forward with the abatement of the hazards that are there.
So there, there is some potential thought that, to saving the building?
We're not delaying our action, but we're just allowing community development to finish their process that they started last year. And so if a feasible proposal comes forward that includes saving that building, the mayor is not, he's not saying he would not, um, consider that. But at this point, where we are as a municipality and considering the public dollars that we've invested, we're moving forward in the way that's the most efficient, effective use of city dollars.
All right, uh, Counsel Williams, all right, and I'll come back to you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, so it, what traditionally, it, it's been my understanding that if we are going to demolish a building, that, um, it's cheaper to do, to bid the demolition and asbestos control at that time.
You're asking?
I guess that's not a question. So wouldn't it be prudent to actually have a plan whether we're going to demolish it or not, to determine if we're going to spend almost two hundred thousand dollars on asbestos control because?
Let me, let me share this with you, Counsel Williams. We have a plan and we have considered, if demolition is ultimately what happens to this site, then this, this abatement must happen prior to that and it's separate from that demolition.
Okay, I guess my question is, can we see the plan then, if there's a plan?
Yes.
Okay. So we, uh, does it ask still to vote on this before we see the plan?
There are two options everyone, it's, the, the plan is actually simple. It's either to demo this property or if the, while that process is being laid out, as I stated here, the request for proposal process exists beyond just a building. We want to revitalize the actual site, which is the land use. However, we've considered, um, cost-saving measures of our own demolition team and the process it takes to demo that building, which could be up to twelve weeks. We can't demo and abate at the same time, one step, one foot in front of the other. By the law, we have to abate, uh, the asbestos first. So that still takes a while while this process is almost done of receiving these proposals. Some of the proposals may include, um, just the land without the building, some of them may say the building, either way it goes, um, the asbestos while it's in our control and while the deconstruction is happening at the caraway site and while the construction is almost complete at the, um, amphitheater site. We figure this is the best time to get this moving and minimal clearly asbestos, whichever way it goes, demo or, um, site development of something vertical new, which will probably still, whoever it is, want to be in partnership with the city, require some incentive. Either way it goes, whether it's new or existing, we have to remove this asbestos. And it has to be first before anything else can be done.
Yeah.
Okay, but, so, but it sounds like we might use our, our city, which would change my question. It sounds like we might use our city team to demo this.
Correct, but we don't, our city team can't abate.
That's, that's my, was my question, because if we're going to demo it, if, you know, we could probably get it demoed, you know, significantly cheaper with the asbestos in there by having, instead of removing asbestos and then demoing it. But if it's our city team doing it, that's different.
So, yeah, I'm not, I don't think, based on what everyone's come back, we're, we're not allowed to just demo. Co- of course, it would have been, hey, let's just do something and ask for forgiveness.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that, you know, when we bid out things with asbestos in the past, it's part of the demolition to the company, which drastically reduce it, that basically gets rid of this.
Correct.
So, but I didn't know.
We talked about eternal, eternal demo.
All right, Counselor Clark, did you have any questions different from?
Yeah, I was, I was excited because I read the word demolition in the title. So I was thinking we were demolishing it. Uh, it says MacArthur School Hazardous Materials Removal and Demolition for the City of Birmingham, but, um, you know, looking at the scope more clearly, it is just the asbestos abatement. And I thought from reading the resolution that this was being done on an emergency basis because of the, you know, uh, potential hazards from exposure and because of the deterior- the, I mean, it's stated here, because of the deterioration of the building. I can't say that very well. So, um, I thought if it was an emergency, you could go ahead and we just kind of ratify it. Is that not what we're doing here? We're actually? It would be a true emergency?
It would not be a true emergency. If, if, if they spent this money and said it was a true emergency and it's been sitting there for twenty years, it's, it's a twenty-year emergency, ain't no emergency. And I, and I know that, the mayor knows that I would lose my mind if I saw something that had been sitting there with, we'd known about for twenty years.
To execute an emergency contract.
Was funny if they, if they put it on as an emergency, you would be arguing other side.
Well, I think they did put it on as an emergency because it says to execute an emergency contract. Okay, well.
So was this not bid out?
I don't have any questions, I, I'm just disappointed that it's not coming down, so.
Is it, was this not bid out?
Um, no, sir, we are doing an emergency contract.
Okay, that's, okay.
Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention to the mayor that if we have a lot of other buildings that we own that are full of asbestos, maybe all of them should be treated as emergencies. Because if you think about it, if homeless people break into that building and set it on fire, then the danger is to the entire community. And then the Fire Department has to come and put it out and the danger is to the Fire Department. And then the people who come clean up the mess, it's a danger to them because asbestos in general is friable. And you breathe it in through your nose and it gets in your lungs and it kills you. So if we have other buildings that are just sitting around, you know, there are twenty-year-old emergencies, you know, why don't we treat them like emergency emergencies? And, you know, bid out the whole bunch of them to one company and get the asbestos out before somebody sets them on fire.
Yeah, Mr. Um, Mr. President, to Counselor Abbott's point, Ms. Abbott, I, I, I shared some very colorful words and language to the president yesterday. Um, because I called him and asked for this to be added on. Um, this, this business of the city of Birmingham owning school buildings. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna let my, my facial expression like finish the statement without saying anything I said to him.
Like you wish we didn't.
I didn't say anything. But your point is well-taken. Uh, we got a lot of assessing to do around, um, significant amount of these schools, um, that are owned by the city. We saw what happened with Hill, we know what's happening here. We know the financial challenges that exist with North Birmingham Elementary. I mean, we can go on and on, these are, these are massive hurdles for these schools. Uh, but this one presents a challenge where we got to take care of the existing residents that live in walking distance of it. And we also have to take care of the foot traffic that's about to exist because we own it and we have to, we have to move at speed. The ideal world, if we can demo, which we were prepared to, and then we did the study to assess and then we found that this hazard exists, which made us go through this process. So we were prepared to. And so we're looking at other sites as well, citywide.
Good idea.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
I, I would just like to put in, I know we haven't formally, um, put forward a disposition policy, but, you know, I do like, I would like for the council to get to, especially if you can batch some things, get to, uh, declare the property surplus before you go out to bid. I know we ultimately do in the end, but it boxes us in to having to declare it surplus and not need it for municipal purpose. Um, and I, I think we're working on a policy in the Economic Development Committee to, some policy recommendations regarding that. But I do think if we can get ahead of it, because I would hate for people, in this case, I think we've all known, I mean, it's five acres in the middle of the neighborhood. It's a good redevelopment parcel, but some where the municipal purpose may be more questionable, I, I would like for us to have a chance to, um, declare it surplus before it's marketed, uh, so that we're not boxed in at the end of that process, just, just a thought.
Understood.
Okay, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item fifty-four is approved. That covers all of our business items.
Yes, sir.
So we're ready for old and new business. Counselor Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, just take a moment to introduce Sonya Singh, who's a student at UM, uh, who's interested in public policy. She's just gone away from the front row. She is, um, an intern with both Neighborhood Housing Services and the Miles College CDC this summer, so she's exploring housing policy with us, but also interested in, um, exploring other areas so that she can find her niche in public policy. Uh, Neighborhood Meetings in District Eight, we've got the Graymont Neighborhood Meeting, um, Wednesday at four-thirty at the Smithfield Library. We're honoring the life, legacy and one hundred eleventh birthday of Birmingham's own Sun Ra. There are multiple events planned, including, uh, the Sidewalk Cinema and Southern Music Research Center presenting Space is the Place. Uh, that's a short film tomorrow at seven P.M. And on Thursday, the Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame presents Sun Ra Day Celebration, featuring a Happy Hour with Birmingham native and contemporary jazz musician Jose Carr and a meet and greet with the orchestra, uh, for concert ticket holders. And then there's a performance of Sun Ra's Orchestra Live at the Carver, but I don't know what day that is, and a Cassandra Griffin photo exhibition. We're also proud to welcome the SWAC to the historic Rickwood Field for their conference baseball tournament. The fun kicks off tomorrow at nine a.m. featuring eight teams from around the region. So head out to District Eight, to Rickwood Field, to cheer for your favorite team and give our visitors a warm Birmingham welcome. Also note that Better Basics and the Birmingham Public Library are partnering to offer the Summer Steamer Camp for third through fifth grade students at the Five Points West Regional Library. The camp began yesterday and ends Tuesday, July fifteenth. So camp days are Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to two P.M. And I'm not sure if you can still register because that's, that might be a little, it might be a little late. And congratulations to all twenty-twenty-five graduates. We expect great things from you in the future. We believe in you and know you could do great things. So congratulations to all the families as well, y'all did it too. And, uh, please have a safe and enjoyable Memorial Day weekend. And that concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for May twenty-eighth at three-thirty P.M. in the council chambers. We have one vacancy on the Design Review Committee for a member-at-large. Uh, if you can, if you're interested, send your resume by May twenty-seventh, close of business to Valerie dot Abbott at Birmingham A L dot gov. Tonight, we have one neighborhood meeting, it's six o'clock tonight. Five Point South Neighborhood meets at the South Highlands United Methodist Church. That's the one right behind the fountain. The fountain that's not on, but the fountain nonetheless. Um, if you have any concerns or issues, we encourage you to call three-one-one, but it's even better if you put the My Behound three-one-one app on your phone and then you can include photographs and write up the description of the problem just the way you want. So it's really much better. Um, and we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for other updates and information that we don't have time to tell you in our little three minutes up here right now. But I also wanted to mention, if I can pull it back up here, the Botanical Gardens is having a, um, nature trivia night from seven to nine P.M. at the Rushton Garden. Now, there is a fee for this, it's fifteen dollars for non-men- for members and twenty for non-members, so you might as well become a member. But anyway, it's a lot of fun and it will be in June third, July first, August nineteenth and seven to nine P.M. Of course, nature trivia night means you probably need to know something about nature, uh, in order to win. But it'll be fun, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. In observation of the holiday on Monday, the next budget of finance meeting will be on Monday, June ninth, at three-thirty P.M. in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, June fourth, by noon. As mentioned previously by Counselor Abbott, Five Point South will meet tonight at six P.M. And then if you don't have anything to do this weekend, Alabama Symphony, Symphony in the Summer will be this weekend, Friday through Sunday. The concert begins at seven-thirty P.M. and there will be food, trucks and a cash bar. And happy Memorial Day weekend, thank you.
Thank you. Per Tim, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. On Thursday, May twenty-second, the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association will meet at six P.M. at the Mirador Center. On Thursday and Friday of this week, May twenty-second and twenty-third, just want to remind everyone that we do have free fitness classes that are being held at the Roosevelt Recreation Center. Thursday's class starts at nine-thirty a.m. and Friday's class starts at ten. Thursday's class starts at nine thirty AM and Friday's class starts at ten thirty AM. And, um, these classes are designed to, uh, get you fit, get, strengthen you and, um, get you motivated to exercise, so to get fit while you sit classes. And they're led by Maestro and Lois, and so don't forget, Thursday is nine thirty and Friday is ten thirty AM. Uh, counselors, I would like to ask for unanimous consent to offer a resolution to welcome The Links Incorporated. They will be hosting the forty-eighth Southern Area Conference. That'll be June fourth through June seventh at the BJCC. There are three local chapters that will be hosting this event. The Birmingham Chapter of The Links Incorporated, the Magic City Chapter of The Links Incorporated and the Tri-County Chapter. And so, um, The Links Incorporated is an organization that was chartered in nineteen forty-six, has over two, two hundred and ninety-nine chapters. And so we're expecting, um, quite a large number of attendees. So I'd like to offer, um, ask for unanimous consent for a resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, counselors, and now the resolution of welcome.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, they'll be painting the town green, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at five PM at Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church, located at two thousand nine twenty-second Avenue North. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, six PM, they meet on Zoom. You can call the office at two, two oh five two five four twenty-three oh two for the meeting ID and pass code. In-N-Out Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, May the twenty-second at five thirty at New Salem Baptist Church, located at sixteen thirty-two Sixth Street North. Drury Hill Neighborhoods Meeting is canceled on Monday, May the twenty-sixth. It's, they're not having their meeting due to the Memorial Day holiday. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May the twenty-seventh at one PM. Please submit agenda items by Wednesday, May the twenty-first, no later than twelve noon to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov. And also, we want to talk, remind of the constituents of District Nine about the Gooder Pop-Up Grocery Market this Friday, May the twenty-third, starting at eleven AM to one PM. Next at the Twenty-Fifth Avenue Baptist Church, located at twenty-one hundred Court North, Birmingham, Alabama. So come out, so that's going to be the Gooder team is coming in for the pop-up grocery market. Also in partnership with Be Kind Birmingham, who will be providing items for spring cleaning, washing powder, detergent, all goodies, so eleven to one, so pop up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, sounds excellent. Um, want to say congratulations to all the graduating seniors, uh, Birmingham City Schools. Want to especially acknowledge the graduating seniors at, uh, A.H. Parker High School, uh, which is in District Five, but also, uh, Woodlawn High School from which, um, my son is graduating as well, so.
Alright.
Uh, yeah, big, big times. Uh, I actually went to their s- uh, award ceremony at, uh, last week at, at Woodlawn and, uh, it was, it was three hours long. Um, lots and lots of awards. So, um, in other news, Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Birmingham Public Central Library. Um, and, uh, also want to let you guys, uh, know that the reopening of the East Lake Library will be Monday, June second. Uh, for anybody who's been familiar with the East Lake Library, it's been closed for several years now. Um, but we've, uh, finally got, you know, everything in the building fixed and, and so it's a momentous occasion for the East Lake Library to be reopening. That's going to happen June second, Monday, June second at ten AM. And along with that, uh, want to let folks know that the Birmingham Public Library has kicked off their registration for the summer reading program. Um, you can get more information by visiting your local library branch or online at www.COBPL.org. And that concludes my announcements. Madam Clerk, I think our public speakers are no longer with us. Uh, so we'll skip over that. And want to recognize our officers on duty, uh, Officer Pinker and Officer Square, thank you for being with us. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
I move for adjournment, second?
Sir, um, we'll address that after the meeting. So we have a motion to adjourn.